Good evening. My name is Janelle Barnes and as the Arts Education Project Manager for the California State PTA, I would like to welcome you to our Creative Ways to Connect with Your School Board webinar. We are thrilled to be co-hosting this event with the California Alliance for Arts Education, and we are especially thrilled that so many of you are joining us tonight. We hope that this presentation will inspire you and give you new ideas about how you can connect with your newly-elected school board to promote the arts in your district. If you are having any technical issues, please call Tamara Sortman at (916) 879-4646, and she will help you to get online and to hear us, or you may also type a question into the question panel, and she will be sure to help you. We do have time at the end of this presentation for questions and answers, so if you have any questions, please type them into the question panel, and we will be answering those at the end of the presentation. We will be recording all of the questions so that we can send them out along with our answers to everyone who has registered via email. And now, I would like to turn this over to Sybil O'Malley, Communications Director for the California Alliance for Arts Education. Sybil will be setting the context for this webinar and will introduce our panelists.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me? I'm going to forge ahead and assume you can hear me. Thank you so much, Janelle. It is a total pleasure to be working with California State PTA again. I am the Communications Director for the California Alliance for Arts Education, and we're a statewide advocacy organization that works to ensure that every student has access to what the ed code promises: access to arts education and dance, theater, music, and visual art. Many people don't realize that it actually is mandated by the state education code, but often remains an unfunded mandate due to budget constraints. Up until a few years ago, the California Alliance advocated mainly in Sacramento, so in that building on top, in that picture on the slide there. We were mainly in Sacramento, working with state legislators and the governor to support policy and funding for arts education. But in 2008, in response to the budget crisis, lawmakers started giving local districts more and more power to make their own decisions about how to use funding, and thus, the arrow down to our local schoolhouse. Just last week, the governor's budget proposal continued this trend, proposing to eliminate categorical funding for programs like arts education and allowing local school boards to decide about how to spend state money. So, in other words, before, there were these sort of prescribed categories that this, you know, pot of money had to go to arts education, and now, they're getting rid of those to just give districts, you know, a sum of money and let them decide how to spend it. So because of that, the California Alliance has invested in supporting local advocacy. In 2008, we launched our Local Advocacy Network, which provides professional development and communication support and strategic support to, I think we're up to about 30 local communities now, all across California. And another way we've gotten involved is this past November, with help from the PTA and other organizations, we helped advocates in 91 California districts to get candidates running for school board to respond to a survey about their views on arts education. That was the Candidate Survey Project, and many of you may have participated in it. The surveys, when they were published, gave voters a way to learn about, you know, what each candidate thought about arts education, what their policy view was, and if they were supportive. And now, this webinar is meant to offer you a next step in building a relationship with your new school board members, now that they've taken office. So, the Candidate Survey Project has led into Creative Ways to Connect to your school board. Next slide. So our first panelist is Kathy D'Agostino-Hamilton, and she's the perfect person to get us started. Kathy launched one of the first local groups in our Local Advocacy Network, and she has built an amazing group there in Escondido. She was pretty new to advocacy when she started, and I've had the privilege to watch her work. If there was an award for courage and creativity in giving elevator speeches, Kathy would win it, hands down. She's not afraid to pull over at a gas station when she sees a school board member, the mayor, and in her friendly but informed way to build a connection and to start a relationship. So with that, I am happy to turn you over to Kathy Hamilton, who's going to tell you about elevator speeches.
Hi there. Can everybody hear me? I hope. I am happy to be in this position, and I wouldn't have said that a couple of years ago when I was asked to do this, because I wasn't sure that I would be good at it. But it has turned out to be a great opportunity to connect with our school district, our community, and we've been able to do a lot of networking through elevator speeches, really. There has been a lot of opportunities in our district to connect with, as Sybil said, the mayor, city council members, and also, school board members and administrators. And what I've learned through the last couple of years, I'm just going to share a couple stories with you, is that all of these people are just people, just like us. And so, a lot of times, I think, as a community member or a parent of a student in the school district, we're intimidated to go up and speak to one of the school board members or a city council member, the mayor, because we think that they're somehow above us or unreachable. And in reality, they really do want to hear from us, and they really appreciate having the feedback from their local community members. And so, I have just, my motto is to be brave and to have courage, to put yourself out there, and not to be afraid to speak up about what you believe in and make sure that your voice is heard. And I have found that it's been beneficial and helpful in many different situations. So, one of those situations, you know, was a time when I was at Costco, and I was, you know, I saw a board member and her husband, and they were looking at fruit, and I just decided to kind of make my way over there. I approached her and just started a conversation, and said hi, and introduced myself, reminded her that I had spoken at a school board member, or I mean, a school board meeting, excuse me, recently. And then, I was able to invite her to one of our community art festivals at one of our local schools, which she did attend, and I was also able to talk to her about some things that were coming up in our district regarding arts education. So, looking for opportunities like that, and like Sybil said, at the gas station, I ran into the mayor, and I decided to get out and go speak to him rather than just driving off. And there's just opportunities like that that sometimes we miss and we don't take hold of, and a lot of times, those are our opportunities when we can just say a quick blurb about what we're doing and how we feel that they can help us in this work. And so, now, I'll talk about some specific ways that we can focus on elevator speeches and make a connection. So, I kind of made this little chart with G-R-E-A-T-T to have a great relationship with your school board members, and hopefully, you can remember it through the letters, "Great." The G is for "get to know them," R is referring to relevant issues, E is expecting a response from them, and A is acknowledging the work that they've already been doing. And then, finally, the T is for thanking them for all of the work that they've been doing, and also, for the time that they've given you to listen and to have a conversation about arts education. Okay? Next slide. So, first of all, you want to get to know your school board. So, that kind of ties into what I was just saying. If you see them out in your community, walking, or at another community event, make sure to take the time to go and speak to them if you get an opportunity, and try to take that opportunity if it presents itself. You know, at the store, in your neighborhood, a lot of our school board members live in our neighborhoods, and so, we want to, you know, kind of keep an eye out and, you know, not be a stalker, but, you know, watch out for them and make sure to take those opportunities to get to know them. But in another way, you would want to know them on a professional level, and that is arriving early or staying late at school board meetings so that you can meet them one-on-one and introduce yourself, and you can create an alliance that way. Also, there are a lot of times that school districts, I know our district has had activities where there are, every few years, the school board has to come up with new goals and objectives and a plan, and recently, they did that a couple of years ago, and I attended all of those meetings, and really, it made a huge difference, because there weren't a lot of parents and attendants that came to help with this work. And so, the feedback that I and some of my other Alliance friends gave made a big impact on their goals, and we did get arts education and creativity back in the school board goals. So, those are the kinds of things that you will want to attend, or if there's an awards ceremony, or something else that you can attend, just to make your presence known and make a connection. And then, also, make sure to invite them regularly to attend your events, if there are other arts events that are coming up in the community or at schools that you know of. So, those are some ways that you can get to know your school board members as well as out in the community. The next, the R stands for "refer to relevant issues." A lot of times, school board members and administrators, as well as city council members, are spread really thin with their time, and they sometimes are being approached by many people on a lot of different topics. So, what I have found is that if you take the time to read the school board meeting minutes regularly and kind of keep up on the voting records of your individual school board members, then when you approach a school board member or a city council member, you will know what their voting records are, and you're going to know what their passions are and how they vote on important issues as they arise. And that's really helpful, because it gives you a framework for discussion when you do approach them. The other thing is that you want to keep up on community and state issues, and we can do that on the Alliance website, as well as through other community news and information in our newspapers. So you want to keep up on what those state and community issues are, because chances are that most of those people are trying to keep up on those things, and sometimes, you can update them on issues that you may be informed about regarding arts education or education in general, and let them know something that they may not know, and that has happened to me as well, where I can tell them something that I learned from the arts that they may not know that. So, so those are some things that you can keep in mind when you're trying to strike up a conversation or in an elevator speech, to do, to be proactive, and to prepare yourself and to be referring to relevant issues. The next is the E, "expect a response and action." So, like, when I met with the school board member that I ran into at Costco, I thought about what I could, how I could use that opportunity, and I made sure to invite her to an event that I knew was coming up. It was several weeks out, but I wanted to make sure that she had a personal invitation, and she did respond to that, and she came to that event. So, those are helpful ways to get an action to happen, is to invite them and to ask them if they will come to something, or if they will vote a certain way. You can ask them to support you. You don't have to say, "Will you vote yes on this?" But you can say, you can ask what they're planning, or what their thoughts are on a subject, and then you can go ahead and ask them to please keep in mind the issues that you're discussing and to support arts education. So, I try to do that each time I have an opportunity, and it tends to be pretty effective. Go ahead. So, another thing that I found, in our school district, our school board members are only making like $400 a month stipend for being sitting on the school board. And, you know, I realize that some school board members may be aspiring to higher political offices, but some of them are genuinely only there because they care about the kids in our district, and they want to make a difference in our community. And so, for the small amount of money that they make, they really get a lot of grief many times, especially during times when the budgets are cut and they have very little options about where they're going to make the cuts. So, we want to take the time to note ways that that school board member, or other school board members, or the district in general have supported students, even if it's not directly related to arts education. If you are relating to them on the level based on their hard work and the things that they're working on, they are going to, they are going to feel more connected to you, and they're going to feel less defensive. And so, a lot of times, just making sure to acknowledge the hard work that they're putting in and the time that they're putting in, and recognizing that can make a huge difference in this climate. The climate's been really tough for several years, and they have had to make a lot of tough decisions, and so, just having your voice be one of the positive voices, rather than constantly being another negative voice, it can make a huge difference in forming that alliance and that connection. Okay? So, and then finally, lastly, you want to thank them for their time and their efforts, and always end the conversation thanking them for their time and their effort, and try to be as specific as possible whenever you can, when it has to do with anything to do with arts education. So, that's all I have. And just a reminder, the tips at a glance is to have a great relationship with your school board members. Also, administrators and city councils members as well, I think, makes a really big difference. I just want to mention really quickly that we are in the process, in our district, of starting this pilot program, and we have connected community members, artists, schools, and we have school board members, and we just had a meeting last night. We had school board members, artists from our community, business members, and schools, teachers, and we're going to be bringing art into 33 classrooms, and it took a lot of hard work and a lot of connecting and collaborating with our school district, our school board members, and our administrators. So, don't forget to make that connection with your administrators as well. That's really important, too. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much, Kathy. Before I turn it over to Pat, I just want to remind everyone that if you have a question for any one of our presenters, in your control panel, there is a tab that says "Questions", and you can, you can just click on the "Questions" tab and type it in, and we will be answering questions at the end. We'll do all the questions at the end. So Kathy just gave us a great overview of how to take advantage of chance meetings, and Pat Wayne now is going to talk to us more about all the formal ways that we can interact with our school board, what all the opportunities are to interact with them. And I'm so happy to have Pat Wayne on this call. She is just a brain trust of arts education advocacy information. She's the Deputy Director at Arts Orange County, the nonprofit countywide arts council, and Arts Orange County serves as a resource and advocate for the arts community and a sponsor of programs and services which enhance public awareness of arts activities and promote the development of the arts and arts education. Pat launched one of the first of the California Alliance's local advocacy coalitions in Orange County, and today, she mentors, I've lost count, Pat, you're going to have to tell us, but she mentors other local coalitions. So, with that, Pat, I happily turn it over to you.
Thanks, Sybil. I am delighted to be on this call. I hope you've all had your dinner tonight, or you're sitting back like you're watching TV and partaking of something tasty. I'm really, you know, this work is, has become a passion. I started five years ago with my very own district, not really knowing how to do any of this. So, like Kathy, even though I've worked all my life in the arts, I did not know how to go about being an effective advocate. So, you might hear us repeat a point that another panelist has made, but with a slightly different twist. So, let's go to the next slide. And there's a variety of ways that you can, it's kind of a buffet, I think, of choices, of strategies, and I recommend that you kind of look at this as a sampler, and at any one time, depending on where you're at with your community, you can rely on any one or all of these. And I kind of remind myself periodically of each of these, so that I can be as strategic as possible, because it's not always appropriate to do each one of these. So, why don't we start with special events, and we can move to the next slide. And what I am constantly doing is scanning my community first for opportunities. Is somebody bringing in a speaker? Sometimes, this could be your business council, or, in our case, the Arts Council, once a year, brings in a speaker who talks about the issue of creativity and innovation and building creative workforce, which, the cornerstone of that is arts education in the schools. And for many of the alliances in my county, in Orange County, we all try to bring one or more school board members or administrators as our guests, and, you know, then have lunch with them afterwards, or a bite to eat where you can kind of process what you heard together, and what does that mean for our school district. A simpler approach, a more local approach, is to actually stage a parent night in your school district. And for that kind of an event, you could be a speaker, you could ask a supportive, anybody who's supportive of this issue and articulate about it, to speak to the parents and kind of have a Q and A afterwards. Find a juicy article to disseminate on this, and I'm going to tell you where you can go to find that kind of information. One, one of my coordinators, Courtney Fielder, in Capistrano School District, did this and invited Boeing to come as the keynote, because they do a lot of support, and they talked about why Boeing cared about arts education. So, that, and it cost nothing except for some cookies and coffee, and Boeing came for free. So, that kind of thing can, it can be really effective, like kind of a little different approach. And you invite the school board, and usually, at least one of them will attend something like this. Okay, next. Another, I think, just a reinforcement, Kathy did a great job on this topic, but that one-on-one is really important, and you can start with any school board members who you might identify as pro arts, and ask their advice. I think there's, and Janelle, you can click a couple more times, there's more on this slide. Great, thank you. That's perfect. Nope. Okay. Avoid hit-and-run scenarios when you interact with your school board member. A lot of times, we get slightly nervous with an official, and so, we go up and we kind of lay out our story and then, you know, run away, and we never once ask them anything. Ask them what they thought, or what their experiences with the arts growing up were, or even to just say, you know, "I care so much about this, what would you advise? Where do you think is the place for me to start?" Kathy touched on this, too, that, you know, people give to people, and they wouldn't be on the school board if they didn't care, so creating that mutual feeling of caring is really important. Next. Another opportunity is using district events. So you didn't have to create these, you know, there's a lot of arts showcases at the holidays, especially at the high school and middle school level, and in the spring. Many of the choirs and drama departments all do spring performances. So, if you find out what they are, and you work with the performing or visual arts teacher, and I've done this to great effect, where you work with the teacher to say, "Is there a particularly articulate student who's involved, or a parent of a student who can meet you and the school board member, and kind of have an informal chat, maybe bring them backstage to meet all the kids, and offer them a couple of choices of things they could go to and dates?" The talking points for the parent or students are really about how have their lives been transformed or touched by this. The great thing about doing it this way is many times, as Kathy said, these school board members are stretched so thin that if they can only stay for part of the performance, they can duck out. They have their own families, so you kind of do it before the performance, and then, if they're going to stay for the whole thing and they want company, you could offer that. Otherwise, you know, they can be free to spend their time as they see fit. Okay, next slide. This whole idea of presenting to a This whole idea of presenting to a school board at a meeting, I think you have two choices. Formal presentation is tricky. You usually need the cooperation of an administrator to arrange like a 15-minute presentation that's actually on the agenda of the school board. And the only time I've been able to pull that off is if there's some kind of good news to announce, often around a student or a particular school choir or drama department getting some kind of award or recognition. So if you have a district coordinator, a paid staff person at the district who you're working closely with, this is a little easier to do. The one you're probably most familiar with is the public comment, where anyone can sign up to speak. You show up before the meeting, fill out a card, and it's a timed presentation. Okay, next, next slide. Most of you probably know all of this, so I'm not going to dwell on it too much, but usually you have a two- to three-minute time limit, which is kind of a relief. And it's important that you script yourself and time it ahead of time, because there's nothing worse than not quite being finished and getting cut off by the timer. It's uncomfortable. You might not have said your most important point. So you want to make sure you've really practiced, I guess, beforehand. And it's a good idea to make sure that you print out your remarks so that you can leave that with the members. And if you have a little handout of anything that you want them to see, an article, a flyer, an invitation to an event, you can give that to the board secretary. Usually it's a, they're the first to arrive there. They're not on the board, but they support the work of the board, and she'll put it in front of each board member for you. Okay, next slide. If you're going to do the public comment and have multiple presenters, you need to coordinate ahead of time so you aren't repetitive and you're all saying the same thing. You want to have slightly different points that you're hitting, and personalize it, each person, make it personal. And if you have too many people lining up to do this, it might backfire on you. I usually recommend no more than three people. And you can ask the person collecting the cards to put all three of you together in a particular order. And they'll usually accommodate you. If you have a huge issue going on, like let's say they put cutting all the elementary music teachers on their agenda, you can, it's a good idea to have as many people churn out as possible, but only have about three people speak, and ask your guests to stand up during your remarks to be acknowledged, that you have a lot of people here tonight who are supporting you, but they're not going to speak. And then have them all stand up and acknowledge the fact that they're there to support you. Next slide. This is a great website. It's put together by the Arts Education Partnership. You'll be treated like you have a PhD in arts education. This site is so searchable, and depending on what grade level you're speaking to, it's divided up that way. And there's topic after topic of points you can make. Points about how this prepares, how the arts prepare kids for the jobs of the future, how it affects test scores, how it affects their attendance, anything you can think of is touched on on this website. And it's short and to the point, and it gives you the resource it came from. So if a school board member, sometimes you have someone who's really analytical, who likes to challenge statistics, you've got all the source material right there to help you out as you put together your remarks. Next slide. Kathy really already touched on this. The only thing I would say about it is, don't assume that they know what you know. What often happens is when we say those words, arts education, everybody calls up something different. Somebody might be thinking you're talking about a 20-minute break on Friday afternoon to glue macaroni on a plate. And if that's what they're thinking, they're not going to believe one point you make about how the arts are critical to a child's education. That activity is a craft that's expendable. It's not integrated, it's not deep, common core learning. So you want to make sure that you're all on the same page. And you can do that through those talking points. Next slide. Kathy touched on this, too. Show an interest in the whole district. Sometimes there's a huge, some other huge issue going on that has nothing to do with the arts, and you want to let them know that you care about all of it, that the arts are part of a complete education. They aren't the only part. Next slide. So I guess my main point here is you've got a buffet. It's not just about one thing. I kind of cycle through each of these, and there's, some of these are particularly effective at certain times of year. You want to get in there and make those school board presentations before they approve their budgets. So January, February, even earlier these days with all they're trying to deal with. And my final slide is just a review of the buffet. And thank you so much, and back to Sybil.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you so much. So if you have a question for Pat about anything she talked about, go ahead and type it into the question chat box on your control panel, and we will answer it at the end. I am so happy to introduce our third panelist. She's going to dive into some of the items on the buffet that Pat told you about. Her name is Mary Galuska, and I'm so happy to introduce her. She has been on our webinars before, and she's fantastic. And last time she was on, I hung up by accident and didn't get to introduce her. But she is such a pro that she just went ahead with her presentation. So it's my pleasure tonight to get to brag a little bit about Mary. She has been a volunteer in public education for 22 years, since her oldest daughter entered kindergarten. She's been a leader in the PTA for over 20 years. She began as a classroom volunteer and served in a variety of positions at the local school district, county, and state levels of the PTA. And for two years, she was president of the 4th District PTA, which covers all of the schools in Orange County. Mary is also the co-chair of the Orange Arts Alliance, which is another local, a branch of our local advocacy network. So with that, I turn it over to Mary.
Thank you so much, Sybil. I hope everyone can hear me. And I'm going to start out, Janelle, if you could, there we go, to the first slide, and talking about how we can work with our local school board and reach them through the National PTA Reflections Program. And for those of you that aren't aware of Reflections Program, you can get more information on our California State PTA website. But it basically, it is a national program, and it's all volunteer, and it stresses participation in the arts for all children, from preschool through 12th grade. And again, as is on the slide, participation is key. It's not so much about who wins, even though, you know, those do go on, that judges deem, you know, the best go on to the national level eventually. But what we want to stress at the local level and at all levels is the participation. It's giving the children an opportunity to create art through their imagination. And this is a perfect opportunity for you to connect this and connect with the school board. What you should do is invite school board members and have them participate in the Reflections event that you usually have at the end of the program. And at the school district level, those events are coming up, actually, probably in January and February, because all of the judging has been done. So it's a great idea to showcase all the participants, which is what we do in the Reflections events, and have them speak with the school board members. What we do in Orange Unified is we actually have our Reflections event at a school board meeting. We designate the hour before the meeting for the event so that the school board members and the administrators can mingle with the children and their parents and look at all of their pieces of art. And then each school board member actually awards the participation certificates to the individual student. So it's a great way for the school board members to see, first of all, the enthusiasm that these children have for the piece that they created, for the parents to see that the school board members are actually taking an interest in it, and how valuable art is to them and their children. So this is one, just one way that you can connect, if you will, with the school board. Next slide, please. Making it personal. This is so very important. To tap into your passion, those of you that are on this call, on this webinar, it's because you have a passion for arts education, just like we all do. And if you make it personal when you're speaking with or presenting before school board members, it will bring out the passion that they have, because it's my belief that every single one of them does have a passion someplace, somewhere, in themselves for the arts themselves. As Kathy mentioned in her presentation, school board members are just people, just like you and I. And if you talk about your own or your children's experiences with the arts to them, it's very, very powerful. And it's really effective one-on-one if you've asked one of your board members out for coffee to talk to them about the arts and arts education in the district. It allows them to kind of open up and remember their own experiences in the arts. I tell the story all the time about my child, it wasn't particularly me, but my son, who in the 4th grade went to a new school and was feeling, you know, a little out of place, you know, all new friends, he had to make all new friends. And his teacher, his 4th grade teacher, he still says to this day, is his favorite teacher. And the reason is because every single study, anything that they studied, she incorporated the arts in it, whether it was history, and they had to write a play, or in the, when they studied the missions and they had to, you know, be creative and build their own mission, et cetera. And she connected it to them, and that connected to my son, because it really allowed him to learn and to connect with the other children in the classroom. So that's my story. And you say that to a board member, that will bring up something in their own childhood or their children's childhood. I remember going to an event a couple of years ago, and the actor Jack Black was present. And it was an event about the arts. And he said that, his story that he told that was so powerful was that his drama teacher literally saved his life, because he was going nowhere. He was going to actually a bad place very quickly until his drama teacher got him back on board. And so it's those types of stories that you want to, that you want to connect with your board members with. Work with PTAs and with the principals, and ask to have the students perform at school board meetings. I think Pat touched on this also. And not only perform, you know, whether it be singing or dancing at a school board meeting, but afterwards have them talk about how having the arts as part of their curriculum has benefited them. As Pat says, it's great to hear from the student's mouth how their lives have changed because they had art in school. Whether it kept them in school, helped their grades improve, helped them, you know, get more friends in the classroom because of a particular art activity. Whatever it is, coming out of their mouths, it's very personal and it's very powerful. Also, work with administrators to see if you could have a different school at each board meeting display their artwork in the boardroom. And I know a lot of school districts do this already. They have artwork hanging up. But what's much more effective is just having it up there is have the students who actually created those works of art and the teachers and the principals be there at the, at the school board meeting and in those three minutes of public comment, highlight, you know, their particular work and how great it was that they had the opportunity to create that in the school. Again, it makes it personal, and it, you know, will affect the school board, each of the school board members. And just encourage students in general to come to board meetings and tell their stories. And, you know, not the same ones all the time, and it shouldn't be always you coming all the time. It's really, really helpful to hear from the actual students who are benefiting from the arts education, and in many places, what little arts education they still have. And this will definitely affect each of the school board members. Okay, next, please, next slide. District's Arts Plan. I have, I'm very privileged, as Sybil mentioned, to be one of the local arts alliance coordinators here in Orange County, at Orange Unified School District. And therefore, I have Pat Wayne as my mentor, which has been absolutely tremendous for me. And so many of the, a lot, because of Pat's work, many of the school districts in Orange County have developed a district arts plan. And I know throughout California, that's also true, that many districts have arts plans. So the first thing that I encourage you to do is find out if your district actually has an arts plan. And if so, of course, you know, find out what it is, you know, read it over. And then, talk to the board members. Let them know that, first of all, that you're interested in assisting them with developing and refining, if they don't already have one, a board policy statement in support of the arts, a resolution in support of the arts. That can be a first step. And then invite the school board members to meetings on either formulating a district arts plan, if you don't have any, you know, coordinate that with your local county department of education. Or updating the district arts plan that is in place. This way, they are an integral part of the process and have a buy-in. And so will be much more amenable to pro arts resolutions and pro arts activities within the district. And then, as I think both Kathy and Pat touched on, educate them about the importance of providing arts education at all levels of education, if it's a unified school district, beginning in the primary grades. And the website that Pat talked about is tremendous. And so you can do your research on that website and provide them with that research regarding the benefits of arts education. the benefits of arts, arts education. And again, not just the benefits of arts integrated within the curriculum, not just, you know, putting macaroni on a plate, as Pat said. And if board members are not involved or maybe don't want to be part of working on the district arts plan, during public comment, again, share what's been going on, if you've up, if you have updated it. And always be positive. Again, you know, don't criticize for their lack of, of supporting the arts in the district, but be positive and, and point out to them how beneficial it would be if there were more opportunities for arts education within the district, within the curriculum. Okay. Share facts about the arts integration and how students can excel in all subject areas when the arts are integrated into the curriculum. And again, you know, do this in a way that you're not preaching to them, but you're encouraging them and being very positive and passionate, which you all are when you're talking to them. And really important, encourage board members to approve a teacher in services for arts integration. I know here in Orange County, at the Orange County Department of Arts, Department of Education, there is a program called Arts Advantage and other county departments, I think, also have this within California. So work with the county boards of education to make this happen and to let your district school board members know that these opportunities exist for their staff members and work with them to encourage them to allow their teachers to go. Okay, next please. Parent Involvement, of course. Here I am as the, the co-chairman of the Special Committee for Arts Education for California State PTA. And of course, I have to talk about parent involvement because that is, as in all parts of education, key to, to encouraging school board members to realize the importance of arts education. So not only will have students, if you can, you know, come to the school board meetings and talk to the school board members, but have the parent community participate in school board members. It's so great when there is, as Pat mentioned, a group of parents in the audience that are supporting their children and supporting the importance of arts in the education for their children. Public comments thanking the board for providing arts opportunities for their children. It's another venue for parents to share their personal stories as to how the arts have kept their child in school, have helped them excel in other subject areas such as math. And, you know, have the parents tell those stories. And also highlight PTA activities that involve student creativity when speaking to school board members, whether you're speaking to them informally, in an elevator speech, as Kathy so eloquently talked about, or formally at a school board meeting. And it shouldn't, again, just be you. It should be a PTA president, it should be parents, it should be the arts education chairs that are going up every school board meeting if possible and talking and thanking the school board members and bragging about what's going on. I mean, that's what we as parents, we always say in PTA, we don't do that enough. We need to brag about what we have done as parents in the schools to provide arts, arts opportunities for children. And I think that's the end of, do I have another slide? I think that's the end of my slides. So I will turn it back over to Sybil.
Hi, thanks so much, Mary. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Tamara, our tech guru, who's gonna, we just have a couple of minutes and we'll get to a couple of questions. And then I think if we don't have time to get to your question, we will hold on to them and answer them and then we'll be emailing answers to you after the event tonight.
Okay, well, we've got quite a few questions now. Thanks for your participation and everything. Let me start at the very beginning. We have a question from Michelle Ganson and her question is, "How did you become familiar enough with the board members to recognize them by face in a store or at the gas station? Does it just take time through attending regular meetings?" So it sounds like this is geared more for Kathy during her segment and I will go ahead and unmute Michelle so that she's able to respond or add any other information. So she is unmuted and Kathy, did you want to take that one?
Thank you.
Yeah. Hi, Michelle, this is Kathy. I, it is from going to school board meetings and also from being a part of the PTA and part of the community for a long time, I gained face recognition. But primarily, if you go to a couple of school board meetings, you're gonna start familiar, familiarizing yourself with what the school board members look like. And they're generally there for a couple of years, so it doesn't take long to get to know who they are.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Yeah. Was there anything else? Tamara, are we still on?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I've muted Michelle again. And the next question is from Joe Landon. And his question is for you also, Kathy. Is there some kind of exchange that happens with board members? Is there something that you do as an advocate that supports them in a way that furthers the relationship?
Oh, I would say that is definitely the case. I feel like that's been a huge part of gaining their support is that they have seen that I came with a solution. And our, our local alliance network here in Escondido, I think from the very beginning, you know, we had some of the people in our group that said things couldn't, weren't gonna ever change and they just wanted to sit around and complain about what wasn't good. But primarily, most of our group had a proactive stance and wanted to see what we could do to make a difference. And so we came to the school board meetings with ideas and how to make a difference. And I think that that really helped us gain momentum in our relationships and building the alliance with our school board members because they saw that we were willing to come up with some ideas and to bring something to the table rather than expecting them to do all of that work. Does that answer your question, Joe?
Joe, are you there? Yeah, he's unmuted. Oh, there, okay.
Sorry, I didn't realize I could talk. Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Joe. Okay, and the next question is from Ben Johnson. And his question is, "The budget, as mentioned, still weighs heavily on the minds of board members. Are there good examples of how to effectively implement during these difficult times?" So I don't know which one of you would want to, to tackle that one.
Do you want me to go again? This is Kathy.
If you've got an answer for it, of course.
So in, in our district, what we decided to do was reach out to our arts community through, we have a municipal gallery and arts partnership in Escondido. And we're fortunate because it's one of, it's actually the only one left in the state of California. But, so they have access to all of our local artists and she's been on our team from the beginning. So if you can get access to your local artist groups, a lot of them are really willing to come in and do some volunteering in the schools. And so it took a lot of time for us, but we were able to work with our school district through a variety of methods. But eventually, we were able to get into the principals' meeting and do a presentation and talk about the benefits of bringing guest artists into the classrooms to work with students. And so, I mean, in a time right now where the budgets are so low when it comes to providing any additional services for any type of education, this was something that the district was really welcoming to. And so we were able to bring artists into the schools and we're just starting that process now this spring.
And Pat, did you have a comment as well?
Yes, I can comment on some of the things we've managed to do here, which is our county office of education was out in front on this issue too and is offering the districts a, some professional development opportunities. And that comes in the form of if they want to do an arts plan, which is really only about people's time, they went out and got grant money to help pay for the subs for the teachers that the district wanted to participate in the plan. And then my organization went to our community foundation and really advocated to them about all the hard work the districts were doing to create these fantastic plans, but didn't have the money to really get started and implement anything. So they created a pooled fund and we just got this up and going and started off with about $70,000 in it from people who cared deeply about this philanthropists and corporations. And any district who had done their arts plan could apply to the fund for up to $10,000 with what they would like to move forward. So it wasn't a ton of money, but it, to me, it was like stimulus funds. It was just a, right, exactly, exactly. So it does take a village to, to keep, keep this issue percolating.
Not to dominate the time, but do you have copies of your current plan? Would you be willing to share that with other boards and districts?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll be calling. Thank you.
Okay.
Wonderful, thanks, Pat, thanks, Ben. Okay, our next question is from Deb McCurdy. And her question is, "We hear a lot about the difficulty of getting teachers on board for arts integration within the regular classroom curriculum. How can we advocate for more arts integration, especially in our secondary schools where teachers seem even less inclined to want to take on teaching arts across the curriculum?" So who wants to take that one?
Well, I can mention an approach we've taken, which is to focus on K6 primarily because our sense of things is that if kindergarten through sixth grade has meaningful arts education and it seems like integration is the best approach because districts just can't afford to hire specialists across the board in every discipline for K6. But they usually have them at middle and high school. So the idea is if you've got programs going in K6, it bubbles up the kids who want to pursue it, who maybe even have a talent at it, and it feeds the middle and high school programs, the classes that are specifically for the arts. It is a little harder, I think, to get interest in arts integration at the middle and high school level just because of the period. You know, it's not one teacher teaching many subjects and they're, the kids are in that bell schedule, there's some challenges there, the arts integration, I think.
Deb, did that answer your question?
Yeah, it did. And it's, you know, it's something that we've been discussing a lot in our district. And one of my concerns is sort of equitable access at the middle school and high school, but probably mostly the middle school, where we do have a couple of arts classes. We have a drama class and a visual arts class. And then we have band for the kids who have been taking an instrument through elementary school and they get to the middle school is still there. But it's, they're on the elective wheel. And what happens is some of the kids get it and some of the kids don't. So even the kids who actually did have arts in elementary school in our district are actually pretty lucky to have several itinerant teachers hitting the elementary schools, at least for part of the year. When they get to the middle school, it's an elective and some kids get it and some kids don't. And some kids go three years without anything. And it's frustrating.
Yeah, that is frustrating. I saw a great presentation by the Kennedy Center in Washington, DC, where their teaching artists are particularly developing things for middle school where they work with the teachers. So for instance, they developed a drama, integrated drama approach where they worked with all the social studies teachers at the middle school on how to integrate drama into their curriculum. And to me, that's, that might be the best that, a way to go after that, but kind of district by district based on interest. It's a, it's a big, that's a big dilemma, I think, that you brought up.
Yeah. Yeah, but thank you for that. That's helpful.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next question is from Janelle Tevens. And her question is, "How are you addressing the Common Core standards that everyone is now focusing on and how can the arts be a part of this?"
Can you answer the question? This is Sybil. Oh, go ahead, Pat.
No, go, Sybil, go ahead.
That's another webinar. I don't think we can go into that in detail, but there definitely are opportunities for, you know, to, for arts integration and for discrete arts in Common Core. And I would point you to, the Arts Education Partnership has had a panel on this very topic recently. And we've posted information about it, but we'll also send it to all the attendees today and that's a good place to start. So I would say, yes, this is a good question, but it's not one we can, we can provide a lot of detail on, on this call. But we will follow up with a link to that panel because it's exactly what the panel dives into.
Okay, great. I did want to mention for those of you that do need to leave the call, that we are recording this webinar and an edited version, because we have a lot of lead-in noise that we want to eliminate, will be posted hopefully on our website soon. And when that link is available, we'll be emailing it to all the registrants. So you'll have an opportunity to share this with your own districts and boards. Let's see, let's go for another question. This is from Serene Ballion. And her question is, "When approaching board members in public, like the Costco example, would it be appropriate to talk with them while they are in any section or just when they're looking at fruit?" Well, wait, now this is a silly question. I didn't read it all the way through.
If you guys recall, that was a highlight of the retreat.
It was.
So I guess the answer is pretty much any food section will do.
Yes, I seem to recall a running joke about melons.
Melons.
Yeah. We'll leave it there.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. Let's see, there is another question from Shannon Zimer. And she is wondering how we are getting in front of the new standards and testing format with Common Core and getting the arts put back on while all these changes are taking place.
I think it has a lot to do with who's guiding the implementation of Common Core. In our area, it's the county office and they have made it a point to In our area, it's the county office and they have made it a point to involve the visual and performing arts coordinator and the arts standards in everything they're doing. So, we're lucky that way, but it's worth checking into what your, how your county office of ed is dealing with the rollout of Common Core and making sure that the arts are a key part of it.
And I see a note here that the PTA is going to be doing a webinar in the next few months about Common Core. So, that's another, that's another possible resource.
Lovely. Shannon, did that answer your question?
It did because I'm in Orange County, so that answers it for me.
Oh, perfect. Okay, thanks, Shannon.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question, well, it's more, some comments from Janice Lieberman. They're rather lengthy. Let me see if I can unmute her and maybe she can kind of consolidate it down into a question. Janice, you're on open mic.
Oh, okay.
So, your comments were lengthy and of course, they'll be in the chat transcript, but I did want to give you an opportunity, perhaps you had a question that you wanted to ask the panel?
Well, basically, okay, I'm a little bit out of it. I've been out of, I taught for 20 years as a public school instrumental music teacher. So, the core, I haven't been, okay, I, my department was eliminated three years ago. And when it was eliminated, arts were part of the core curriculum in standards. But my question is, why is it left to school board members to decide what the curriculum should be and the remainder of the children's lives? I mean, this is just incredibly ridiculous, why school board members are deciding, many of whom have never studied arts or have very little experience in the arts. It's my experience with school board members. And so, the basic question is, why, why is it left to the school board to make these extraordinary decisions for what I know to be one of the most important and valuable subjects, the arts and music in all our curriculum? So, anyway, that's the question. Is that a little bit more concise?
Does anybody want to answer that one?
This is Sybil. I think, I'm sorry, I forget your name.
Janice.
Janice. Oh, I mean, I think you bring up an interesting question and certainly, this is the way things have been moving in California is, you know, and the governor, I know, has a strong belief in moving decision-making power closer to the people in the community. But certainly, you know, we're, you know, we're trying to sort of respond to that change by, you know, like our presenters mentioned, giving school board members whatever information they may not have about the arts. And so, understanding that we may have to do some education around the benefits and all that kind of thing. And, so, yeah, so, I hear your question and I think there's, there might be an opinion in there and I appreciate that. And I think this is, you know, people like yourself who have that experience have a great opportunity to, you know, help school board members as much as possible because as Kathy said, they are volunteers, they are, you know, you know, making tough decisions. So...
Can I chime in on that for a second too, Sybil? This is Kathy. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good.
Okay. Another thought on that is that don't underestimate the power of your assistant superintendent of instruction to have some power on decision-making when it, in regards to curriculum. Because I know that we have a new assistant superintendent of instruction who's very pro arts and she has been the one that's let me into the principals' meetings. And so, I think that there is another avenue as well as the school board. So, you kind of need to make that alliance with both the administrator curriculum as well as the school board because our administrator curriculum is actually really interested in looking at ways to integrate arts into the classrooms.
This is Mary.
Go ahead, Mary.
Oh, sorry, I was going to reiterate what, actually, what Pat, maybe what she was going to say is that it does, like she said, it takes a village. It's not just the school board members, but the administrators and the parents and the community. It really is the entire community that we want to come together so it's, so that the school board members realize that this is something that the community wants, that the, the parents want, that the children want. And, you know, that's why arts education is so important.
I think too, the frame around this and the reason we ended up in this boat is that somewhere along the way, the arts got treated as an extra. So, that's why the school board ends up in this position because they can decide, oh, hey, I want extras or I don't want extras. They don't have this discussion around reading and math. So, I think that's the frame around this. As the education code says, it's as important as reading and math, but in their minds, it's an extra. So, we have reframing to do. And in some cases, it takes some convincing. I've never run into anybody who didn't think the arts were good for kids. The stumbling block usually is they don't know how to get it back. So, this is where we can educate, we can turn to the county offices and say, how can you help retrain teachers and where are we going to find those resources to put it back? Great question.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's take one more. And then, the rest we may want to take offline since we're running a little late, but let's see how this goes. This is Joey Castaneda. And his question is, "What is the best thing arts organizations can do to support parents and the community wanting to reach school board members?"
So, often, arts organizations have boards and staffs and volunteers who are members of communities. And what holds power with the school board is the voter, the voters in that community, the people who live there. So, what we've tried to do is plug in the staff and boards of our symphony, our performing arts center, to educate them on where do they live, first of all, and what's happening with that school district. A lot of times, for an arts organization to show up at a school board meeting, they have a dog in the race. You know, this is their business, the arts. So, they're, especially if you don't live there and your arts organization doesn't operate there, you're kind of looked at skeptically. Like, I only advocate personally in my own school district. If work is to be done elsewhere, I find other members of the community to plug in there. But behind the scenes, they can be working on their own arts education policies that often an arts organization will be working in this school on this side of the county and that school on the other side of the county. And there's no systemic plan. And I believe Kathy was talking about a scenario where if you start working at the district level and you say, how can we go across all of third grade to support what you want to do in music? Or if you're a drama organization, what can we get the fifth graders in drama? That, and I believe Culver City adopted this approach where they had three arts organizations there that were super active. And the three arts organizations sat down, looked at their resources and said, okay, you are most, I want to work in first and second grade, you're taking third and fourth and you're taking fifth and sixth. Now, let's align our programs so they build on each other according to the standards. And it was a brilliant approach. So, those are a couple ideas.
Okay, did that answer your question, Joey? Joey, you're, are you still there? Yes, okay, he said yes. Okay, thanks, Joey. All right, so, let's see, let's take one final question for the evening. And this is from Ben Oldham. And his question is, "What ideas do you have for a professional arts education organization that wants to connect with administrators and PTAs? In their case, I believe they're from Oklahoma, their organization, they do not have children in the school itself, so a lot of them aren't members of the PTA." So, how could they connect?
Well, I know in our district, what we do is we have different presenters at our city, at our district PTA meetings each month. So, they could approach the district PTA and ask to be a presenter. That's one way. Also, we have a lot of arts organizations that will offer like a free assembly to schools if they want to present to a specific school to get their name out. But as far as working with administrators, you kind of have to go through, it's difficult because they don't, they, they put, they push a lot of people away that are trying to make money off of the district. And it seems like it's difficult for arts organizations to create that connection with the district, even to get their flyers out. So, again, it's creating a personal relationship, getting to know the school board members or people at the district level. And I think the best way to do that is to start forming relationships within the district with principals or schools and parents leaders.
Ben, did that answer your question? Did that give you some ideas? You're on open mic, so you can, you can answer if you'd like.
Mary might have more on that.
I'm sorry, I was having trouble unmuting.
Oh, that's okay.
There we go. Actually, Kathy kind of hit it right on, right on the button there. The district PTA, which is listed on the California State PTA website, that contact information, would probably be the way to connect with, with the districts and with PTAs. And there might be, for example, here in Orange County, we have every year, we have a presentation for assemblies and different organizations that is presented for all of the schools and all of the PTAs and parent groups in the county. So, to somehow connect with that. But, yeah, it's kind of tough to go through and connect with administrators and with the administration, especially now. I mean, I haven't had children in the schools for quite a while now, since I'm old. But when I did, I know that it, you had to go through many hoops to get them, you know, even the flyer out, so...
But one thing that you can do is, is you can actually do some volunteering if you can, if you can possibly do that. And that's a good way to get on the inside.
Okay. All right, I think that's it then. Does, I guess we can wrap this up. I want to thank everybody for coming and spending your evening with us. And I'll turn this over to Janelle.
Hi, this is Janelle again. And I also want to thank you for spending your evening with us. We hope that you had some aha moments during this webinar. And we look forward to hearing your success stories as you connect with your school board members. So, if you do have an opportunity to put one of these ideas into practice as you promote the arts in your school district, please share your success stories with us. We'd love to hear them. I'd also like to thank Pat and Mary, Kathy, Sybil and Tamara for sharing their expertise with us tonight. We had a lot of great questions. We weren't able to answer all of those questions, so we will be sending out via email the answers to the questions we did not get to. We'll also be sending out a recorded version of this webinar and other resources that we talked about tonight. So, you should be getting those in your inbox within the next couple of weeks. On your screen, you see resources for the California Alliance for Arts Education and California State PTA smarts. So, we hope that you'll take advantage of these. Our websites are full of information about arts education and arts advocacy. And Sybil and I are both available for questions. So, if you want to get in touch with us, you can reach us at the numbers or emails listed below. So, thank you again for joining us and we hope that you'll, will join us for future webinars. As it was mentioned earlier, we are planning to have more webinars this spring, especially one focused on the Common Core. Thank you and good night.